Yeah, it's the annual, uh, foot plan permit. Foot plan specific. Yeah, I do.
So you what?
Not really. I mean, I've been having phone calls on a routine basis. Two different project managers are working at it. It's like, you gotta hold it in for the time that they've been on the phone. And last week, an hour and a half. I have nothing to do with the project at this point. It was just, I've been involved before. Introduced me to clients, but they wrote the proposal. Do you know what you said you were gonna get it done?
Yeah? All right, I guess we're ready. You guys ready?
Yep.
All right, folks. Can you hear me back there? All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. I'm gonna start the meeting by asking for approval of the minutes from our September 12th meeting. Uh, we have any questions or corrections? You got a motion to approve?
I'll make said motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Okay, Ben abstained. Okay, um, I have one announcement. We're gonna welcome Ben Body back to the Planning Commission. He filled the vacancy left by Jeff, so welcome back.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you again. Couple of ground rules again. We're gonna have H and K present, uh, HK Naesville present. We're gonna ask that you hold off on questions and comments until after they're done. We're gonna have discussion, uh, as a committee here, uh, so please wait till we're done. Try to hold off until we're done. Um, and we'll gladly, gladly entertain questions and comments. That being said, Scott, if you wanna take the floor? I'm assuming you're gonna take the floor.
Yep, and I'll do it if you're all right from here.
Yeah.
So I don't have a whole lot to present.
Um...
Chris, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'd like an observation. I've been here, I've been to the, the open house at the quarry.
Can you turn the mics up just a little?
Not here.
Not here. There's no mics over here.
Any better?
Are you the only one?
I think I'll be. Your problem.
I would like to offer to recuse myself if there's any question about my objectivity. I've been to the open house at the quarry last spring. I've been to all but the first appearance here with the, uh, Planning Commission. And I've been to the two appearances at the Board of Supervisors. And I believe I can be objective, but I will offer to recuse myself.
You're offering that to?
To the, to HK.
We don't have a problem.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, man. All right, um...
Does he have or have?
Right.
Are you recused or not? I couldn't hear what you said.
You say you didn't have a problem.
No problem, R and N, no.
He offered it to HK.
I know, I understand. I just couldn't hear.
Thank you. All right, you can try from there, see how it works, uh, with the audio.
All right, I'll, I'll just speak loud. Just wanted to take an opportunity to start this recap where we're, where we're at, um, where we came from, and then get into our most recent submission, which was October 28th, where we essentially provided some additional materials, uh, information that was discussed in, in many of the past events, the last two Planning Commission meetings, but never formally, uh, addressed or formally submitted on. So, if everybody remembers, uh, we submitted the original application for the request for zoning change back in September of 2016. We had a town hall meeting, um, in December of the same year, 2016. We had our first open house, uh, back in April. It was actually Easter weekend. We had two smaller, uh, open house events, uh, for smaller groups. And then we had two appearances before the Planning Commission. Uh, the first appearance, we presented the application initially, and we had a number of discussions and, and responded to, uh, the initial questions that, uh, came about the application. Uh, we received, uh, review comments on that application in early July. We responded to them with our second submission, which essentially, our second submission was responding to the township engineer's comments. We reviewed that in the second appearance before you, which was the August meeting, um, and we haven't been back since. Uh, we took some time to digest the information, discussion, the number of things that were discussed, and took an opportunity to provide the third submission package, which, like I referenced before, was submitted on October 20th. There were six items that we provided information on, or topics. The first one was, uh, the economic impact on the aggregate industry to the local economy. Arsenic in groundwater, real estate values surrounding aggregate operations, post mining land use alternatives, um, a letter, this was more cleanup, but a letter stating that we would not access the quarry from Shady Lane. Uh, that was one of the things that was discussed and we committed to. And PINDY search results and responses. In that letter, we also proposed, as part of this request, six conditions that we would offer up that should you choose to provide favorable recommendation to supervisors would carry along with that recommendation, and then ultimately to the supervisors. Uh, the first condition was, uh, a water quality monitoring program that was actually discussed and provided with our response to the township engineer's comment letter. That was focused on doing semi-annual water quality sampling at six monitoring locations. During each event, for the first two years, we would do a full suite of analytical parameters suggested by the Bucks County Health Department for drinking water. And then we would review those results with the township, most likely the township engineer. And for the third year, reduce that same monitoring program in frequency and limit the analyticals to what hits, what constants, or parameters were, uh, detected. The second condition, uh, was an offering to dedicate a temporary water supply, uh, system, which is essentially a tank on a trailer, a trailer mounted tank that we use when there is, uh, water impacts to, uh, residential well. We offered that to be dedicated to Naesville Materials or, or West Rock Hill Township residents, and proposed that it would be, um, located on township, uh, property, most likely in one of the garages, to be utilized solely for, uh, response when there is an impact to a residential well supply, to get them back in temporary water. Arsenic treat, condition three, arsenic treatment systems. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about arsenic in groundwater, um, in modern, in residential wells. What we propose is, within the 1,500-foot well protection zone, any resident that has a detection of arsenic above the statewide health standard, would contact the township or contact us. We will come out and take our own sample, obviously verify that. And if it did exceed, at Naesville Materials' cost, would get a treatment system installed. Uh, the maintenance of that system would, uh, be borne by the, uh, property owner, but the initial installation and cost of that system, uh, would be offered by Naesville.
Scott, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, you have that within the 1,500-foot well protection zone. That is not the zone of impact.
It's not the zone of impact. It's the, yeah, so the initial proposal is within the 1,500-foot well protection zone. Condition four, um, is really focused on noise and continued installation of the existing crusher and screen buildings that are on, on site today with sound-reducing materials to abate noisy emissions. Condition five, um, utilization of strobe lights at night on the off-road equipment utilized on, on property, uh, when conditions permit. And condition six, it, it revolves around the berm. The current plans and our response to the township engineer's comment letter, if you recall, had two different types of berms. On the Magnati parcel, the one we, we currently have zoning, we proposed 10-foot-high berm with two-to-one side slopes, 10-foot top width. On the parcel where we're requesting zoning change, uh, we proposed a berm in accordance with the, the township standards, three-to-one side slopes, 15-foot-high, uh, 10-foot top width. What we're proposing with this condition, to make the, the berm more uniform across the entire area, would be a 15-foot-high berm, 10-foot top width, but go with two-to-one side slopes. And that's, that's condition six.
So two-to-one is...
A little steeper.
Yeah, are, we require three-to-one, correct?
Three-to-one is the order, yes, yeah.
All right, uh, a couple of questions for you on condition five. The strobe lights, is that to replace the road feet?
At night only.
At night?
So during the day, obviously, we have to have the, the backup alarms. But at night, uh, we are allowed to use strobe lights on off-road equipment, obviously, as, as long as it's in, in the dark. So we would propose to utilize, utilize, uh, the strobe lights for the loaders, the off-road equipment, um, at 30 night time hours. And that's been done in a number of other facilities with, with success, so...
How about the, uh, the crusher? I know at one point you said there were doors ordered for the crusher building. Is that, I don't hear yet?
Those doors are...
Doors are on.
They are?
What we're entertaining now, Chris, is, um, a host of pricing from, um, insulators to do some type of, um, spray foam or, or some type of additional insulation to the screening house and the secondary part of the plant. That's the next level of, of noise reduction we're gonna consider.
Has, has any, has there any testing would have been done after the doors are installed to see if there was a reduction?
Up to my knowledge.
The, uh, the proposed arsenic removal system, does that include UV sterilization and filtration?
Uh, it, it wouldn't, um... In our, in our past submissions, we did, uh, identify with our past sampling that the, the number of different things that we, we've seen that exceeded, uh, statewide health standards. Obviously, coliform bacteria was one of them. And obviously, the, uh, go-to treatment system is a UV light. That's kind of separate from the arsenic. Uh, if, if you need a UV light, that would, that really would be needed anyway, whether the, the quarry was involved or not. So it would be, it would be strictly the treatment system for arsenic treatment.
In the portion where it addressed, where Naesville had addressed the two, uh, high readings of arsenic that was kind of rolled in altogether there in, in the statement of, of removal, ultraviolet infiltration. That was a major question.
Okay, all right. Yeah, this, this condition three was specific to arsenic.
It's just, as a point of clarification, I'm seeing in the latest, or the latest application, talk about, um, petition to amend the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan to permit extraction on the specific tax parcel. Are we talking about just that tax parcel, or is the proposal actually to amend the zoning and registration to permit extraction within the Residential Conservation District?
Just that tax parcel. There's a map in the, uh, there's a map in the petition. So, as you know, half of the areas already, uh, uh, zoned extraction, and we're just talking about the area that's not zoned, the other half, if you will.
Steve, does that run us into the issue of spot zoning?
Not necessarily, because we have extraction in the areas.
It's just attached, it's just attached to the existing area that's already zoned extraction. Spot zoning would be if you took, uh, an area off in Timbuktu and said, okay, we're gonna put five acres of quarry over there. This is just expanding the existing area, so it's not a spot, it's an expansion.
I agree. You ready, Ben?
I do. I have one question. And forgive me if you've answered this before. In your application to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, you responded to the first question, which was, which of the following closest describes the proposed project? And your answer was no groundwater extraction, that is, for water supply well with well for irrigation, unwater pumping to facilitate mining, untrade operation. It's proposed in order to support this project.
Can I ask what, what you're specifically referring to?
I think that's the PINDY application.
Oh, is it the PINDY application? No, I, I know what you're looking at. Second map. Okay, so that, that was answered in, in, from the aspect of no groundwater extraction through a water supply well or well. I think what you're looking at, or I think what you're asking is, this project, obviously, is an expansion of the existing operation, where obviously, we do pump groundwater through our, to manage the pit, through the, um... Through our NIP, our, our NIPD's discharge point. This answer was, was answering it from the perspective of, we're, we're not pumping, um, through a well, or, or anything like that. The existing operation, the pumping is already occurring through the existing operation. So, um, that answer could be answered, yes. And yes, groundwater pumping would occur as a result of, uh, managing water through the pit. The PINDY results would essentially be the same.
To me, it's a little bit misleading. In fact, I think it's a lot misleading. And they responded to you that, that, um, there was no impact, based on your response here.
Well, the initial, the initial response to this...
I'm sorry, but I need to know where we're, what we're referring to. Like, can you just hear?
There's no PINDY.
74 of 70.
Can you respond to the question?
Way in the back.
Yeah, way in the back. It's, uh...
Okay, thank you.
Right after the, uh, open. Take the six duty. I'm sorry, can you, can you say that, Scott?
Well, my, my initial answer, but I'll, you know, continue. This is the initial screening, and, and as you can see with this PINDY, um, through DC and RDR was the eight, eight, um, plant species that were identified. And then obviously, the bog turtle. And then we went further, submitted additional information, um, to both those agencies for further review, and that's where we got the clearance. Although that not provided in here, the additional information packages was a narrative of the project, plans of the project, more detailed plans of the project, um, where you could continue, you obviously could see it's an expansion of the existing operation. That question was answered specifically to the expansion, where from the expansion, we're not pumping, uh, groundwater. But obviously, it's, it's part of, it's an expansion of the existing operation, where there is groundwater being pumped. We could easily rerun that PINDY, change those answer, or responses. We'll get the same, uh, pits, and we'll, we go through the process again.
So Ben, our, our pump and our sump won't be located in that expansion?
Right.
It'll remain in the, in the location where it is now.
But you will still be drawing groundwater from that...
Just as we are now. Not from, not from that footprint of the, the expansion.
So this was answered from the perspective of that pumping isn't gonna change. The pumping that's occurring today will continue to occur. No pumping as a result, no additional pumping as a result of the proposed expansion is, is going to occur. And, and, and you can see that through our groundwater model, it was part of this application. So that's how, why that was answered that way.
Okay. You have any comment on that, Steve?
I understand one thing, too. Should we get zoning, the next step is to submit an application to correct the permit to the, to the Potsville District Mining Office for a full-blown surface mining permit. This information, these PINDYs, this is where that information goes. And that's reviewed by all the agencies again, but reviewed by Potsville. And certainly, if there was a, a concern or issue with any of the responses, it would be worked through at that, at that juncture as well. Because that's essentially where that, where the PINDYs and the environmental, um, overlooks are, are reviewed and dealt with.
To answer your question, Chris, I mean, it's probably worthwhile exercise, just for peace of mind, that they rerun the PINDY with the alternate answer. But I tend to agree with Scott, I doubt that the results of the PINDY research would change.
I could run that tomorrow and, and provide it to Steve, and I'm pretty confident we'd have the same exact PINDY.
Clearly, your drawdown that, that shows very little difference.
Correct, correct. And, and that point is, is why it's answered, because the, the existing operation's currently pumping, and this expansion, although it's an expansion, we're not proposing to change anything with our pumping. Pumping will not change.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions?
Questions I have, we'll answer.
Okay. You guys good? All right, you wanna proceed? Or are you done?
I was opening the floor to you guys for any questions you have on any of the materials that were, uh, provided, the first two submissions, discussed at the first two appearances before you, and then more specifically, since this was most recently submitted, this package from October 20th. If there was any questions specific to what's, you know, provided. Obviously, everything that's in here was, was discussed numerous times in the past. Like, like I said earlier, this is a formal response to those, those specific topics.
Okay. All right, well, I guess I'll, I'll open the floor, if anyone has any question that comes. Michelle?
Uh, Michelle, shout out 260,000 acre area.
Do you mind if you stand up?
Oh, sure. Scott, I, I also have some, um, items I wanted to address with you regarding the PINDY results. Ben, are you?
Mm-hmm.
I also had noticed that, um, response to that question, um, seemed to be misleading to me as, as well. And I understand that you're gonna rerun that, that result. I also, um, I was curious, so, so you, you made the PINDY requests for the expansion area, and you got these, um, potential hits for species, further review required. And you just stated that you submitted some information back to the review agencies. I, I'd like to know, can we see?
Absolutely.
What exactly did you send to them?
Absolutely.
Because I would like to know what, how you presented your project to them, because obviously, you know, if a project is misrepresented, it will affect the hits for species that you might get.
Yep.
I had brought that up at the last Planning Commission meeting. But, uh, and I came up to the township to look at the documents, but I didn't see anything in the file regarding that. And, and then the other thing about, um, the questions on the PINDY. One of the questions was, and I don't have the results in front of me, so I'll go by memory, but I believe there was a question that said, um... Could there be wetlands out there in the vicinity of, of the project area? Was a wetland investigation conducted by a qualified professional? I'm not sure, maybe Ben, you, you have, have it there in, in front of you, the PINDY? Do you have that? That question, I think is question four. Can you read that to me, if you don't mind? I hate to, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Accurately describe what is known about wetland presence in the project area along the land parcel by selecting one of the following, one of the following: project and quotation marks. Includes all features of a project, including buildings, roads, utility lines, outflow, intake structures, wells, stored water retention, detention basins, parking lots, fly-ways, lawns, etc., as well as all associated impacts. For example, temporary staging areas, work areas, temporary road closing, right road crossings, areas subject to grading or clearing, etc. Includes all areas that may be permanently or temporarily affected, either directly or indirectly, by any type of disturbance. For example, land clearing, grading, tree removal, flooding, etc. Land parcel equals the lots on which some type of projects or activities are proposed to occur. Your answer is, the project area or land parcel has not been investigated by someone qualified to identify and delineate wetlands, or it is currently unknown if a project or project activities will affect wetlands.
Yeah.
Thank you. And the reason I bring that up, and, and I'm aware that you had a wetland delineation done subsequent to that.
Correct.
But I, I bring that up because I noticed you had answered no. And I thought that was strange, because you are an environmental consultant. You should be aware that there are wetlands out there.
Yep.
But I came across a site plan prepared by your H and K as part of Southport Township documentation. And on your own site plan, you clearly show wetlands in the area that you currently show as your proposed expansion area. And so you, and, and that was dated, I think, in like, I don't know, 2001 or something like that. So I just thought it would seem very misleading to me. It seems as though you have been misleading, um, with review agencies as to the extent of natural resources that might be out there. And I just wanted to bring that up, because...
That's fair.
You know...
So, we ran this, obviously, because it was brought up. And at the time, like we just, we discussed in prior meetings, we, we didn't do a wetland delineation, because this is really focused on zoning. And, and obviously, you get through zoning, then you would do your wetland delineation, and, and that would be part of the application to the Potsville District Mining Office. In response to, uh, the issues that you brought up, we did run the PINDY. And at the time, we didn't have a wetlands delineation done. So there was really no other way to, to answer that question. As far as wetlands that you saw, yeah, there's wetlands on the opposite end of the quarry, along Canaline Road, um, but they're not part of, of this parcel or the study area that would be, who you'd run a PINDY on. And obviously, when we ran the PINDY, we, we ran it for the area that was proposed to be impacted by this proposed, uh, expansion.
I'll get that site plan and I'll, I'll present it. But it's...
That's fine, that's fair.
Compared by H and K, and it shows right behind your house, Trish.
Yeah.
It shows wetlands.
Absolutely.
There is. And that was the area, Trish Hurlinger for 10,000 acre area. That was the area that was already part of your plan from before.
Right.
That, you know, you have, so if that is already wetlands, and you can't use that acreage, then it would be spot zoning. No?
There would never be spot zoning, because it's just an expansion of an existing area.
And never once during this process have I ever said that there wasn't wetlands there or misrepresented. I was clear that we didn't get a wetland delineation done up there at the time.
Right, but if you wanted to, you could use that area now, because it's part of your, from before.
It's, it, we have zoning approval for that, we call it the Magnati parcel.
Yes.
Um, but if there's wetlands there, we certainly would not be able to extract on that, you know? And, and the wetland delineation would be a, a requirement as part of our surface mining permit application.
Okay, so if you couldn't extract from that area, but the other area you could, so that wouldn't be like a spot zoning thing, because that you can't use that acreage? That's where I'm confused.
We're only asking for a specific area. We're only asking for a specific area. If there, if it turned out, if it turned out that that area was a wetland, regardless of zoning, it couldn't be mined.
Okay.
And that would be, excuse me, that would be stopped with the permit process?
Yes.
Correct.
I mean, and I think Scott has explained this, but the township's approval of zoning is step one. Then, we've got to go to the Department of Environmental Protection and get an amendment to the mining permit. And all of these issues will be, environmental issues will be reviewed in great detail by them. If they were to determine, as the question was asked, that, hey, that five acres that was rezoned turns out to be a wetland, then we could not get a permit to mine it and would be unable to mine it.
Right.
Well, I understand, you know, what you just said, but in a township making a decision to rezone residential to extraction, they do, they still need to consider things like wetlands and threatening a dangerous species, why not. And I understand what you're trying to say is those steps are followed in the permit process, but you can't expect, you know, a township to rezone a lot without knowing anything about the property subject to the application. You need to, you know, we need to know some information about it.
Well, I think the township-
And quite honestly, if it hadn't been for me making a stink about the wetlands out there, we wouldn't even be having this discussion.
We wouldn't be having this discussion at this level.
And the other thing is-
But the requirements are clear, that that has to be studied, has to be presented, and if, and I don't believe that there is a wetland where this area is being rezoned, but if there were, the Naceville materials wouldn't be able to mine it. So it, I can, I understand the frustration in a way, but unfortunately, this has got to go to step one, then you go to step two, and then you go to step three, and it isn't all compressed into step one.
Well, I do understand. The plans that you show right now, the way you show your proposed berm, basically you're only 300 feet away from the existing residences out there. That's in wetlands. And Scott, you had said at the last meeting that we attended, that a delineation was done, and you yourself had said that that berm, that proposed berm, will have to be modified accordingly. And I'd like to know, was a survey performed of the wetland delineation? Have any revised site plans been presented to the township? In order for them to make a determination on this rezoning request, we need to see, you know, your project area, and it sounds like your project area needs to be modified. So I don't know, did you receive any revised site plans that showed the delineated wetlands that were surveyed?
They did not, because we didn't have the plans final when I did this submission. They are available. We will have to adjust our limits slightly, but again, we are requesting zoning change. So if we don't get the zoning change, we don't go to the next step, like Mr. Harris explained. The next step is defining those limits for mining based upon the natural resource overlays, wetlands, streams, whatever you have. Yes, we can overlay the wetlands on these plans and show the location of berms and location of the extraction area around those wetlands. But at the end of the day, we're here for a zoning change. They're going to assume they give a favorable recommendation, we get the supervisors, and we get a favorable approval there. It's going to be for the change of zoning on this parcel to allow the use. At that point, that allows us to then go to the Pottsville District Mining Office, submit the application to correct the permit, where the limits will be defined based upon whatever township regulations there are for setbacks, as well as what the state has for setbacks. And obviously, wetlands and streams and buffers and all that come into play.
And I guess the point is, that the plan that exists right now is the maximum area that could be mined-
Correct.
-if the property is rezoned. The impact, for example, of wetlands will reduce the area that can actively be mined. So, I hate to use this word, because it's sort of backwards from what we're trying to say, but from your standpoint, what we presented is the worst case. It is the maximum area that could be mined if this area is rezoned. Any natural resource restrictions will reduce that area.
And the purpose of agreeing to do the PINDY at this stage was, one, it's a legitimate concern, legitimate point. We wanted to show that, and like I said in the meeting, I'm confident that there's going to be PINDY hits. And I was also confident that we would be able to work through them with the agencies, which we did. And I'm confident that if we reran this and answered some of these questions differently, we would pretty much have the same result, and we would work through them like we did. And again, that's a step that is at the next level. But we also did it to provide the information that I think was looked for at this level, to answer some of those questions.
Well, okay, so that's all I have. Go ahead and PINDY. Sit down for now.
Chris, could I?
Yes, go ahead.
Not necessarily respond to this, but for everyone's benefit of the PINDY. The answers on the PINDY are selected from a group that's given to you to ask for. So you don't make up an answer, you don't have a choice of the wording of your answer. So there isn't always a perfect answer.
Right.
You select from the several options that they give you, depending on where you're located and some other things. And notwithstanding, the more information we have, the better it is for everyone to understand the project and understanding where the wetlands are. It is part of that way. But my experience has been, if you answer the question that you haven't had a wetland search done by a qualified individual, the system defaults to the most conservative results. You will get hits, assuming that you have wetlands on the property, if you answer that you haven't had a study done, in my experience with the PINDY system. So in this case, I don't, that's why I said, it's worth rerunning it with the different answers, but that's why I wouldn't expect that you see any significant difference. Again, that doesn't mean we wouldn't like to see where that wetland line is and how that impacts the overall project.
Do you have a feel for what that potential reduction might be, like on a percentage basis? So if you're 100% extraction, what you can do based on setbacks with those-
If you look at the limits today that are on the plan, the northern end, as you approach into the balance of the Magnati parcel, that line where it is today on the plan moves in about 50 or so feet. And it's what I expected. I knew the wetlands ran across that Magnati parcel in that area somewhere, from east to west or west to east. The question was exactly where it ran. The wetland delineation delineated exactly where it sits.
But what about the parcel that you're looking for? No change on it? Does that continue into that parcel? Is there a reduction?
No, that's limited to that. Now, there is a little pocket, which is on the outside, toe of the berm on the straight end from the cul-de-sac, but we would work around that, because the existing pile would essentially become the outside of the berm. And that's a small pocket, it's like less than a tenth of an acre. Essentially, it was man-made when that pile was put in. There was a trap put in, and it held water, and guess what? Of course, yeah.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Frank Welsh, West Rock Hill Township, Kingley County. But I heard some ideas that were tossed around. One of them was some references to the arsenic levels, and with reference to, was it EPA, some women, who is it that says-
EPA, DEP, health departments, yeah.
For the past 10 years or more, we've been testing all the water, and it falls several magnitudes below that level. Am I supposed to accept it to be moving up as long as it stays under the EPA level, or whatever the level is? I don't think so. That kind of ticks me off. I don't want my level to come up to their level. I want it where it is now. And another point is, if I lose water on my land, I'll be damned if I want a truck to sit there supplying me water for the rest of however long it is that I take.
Well, the-
These don't seem like reasonable compromises, if you will.
So, let me answer them in reverse, okay? So, the tank, the tanker that we talked about, was what we use, so let's say your well is impacted, and it's impacted in quantity, and we lowered the water table in your well, and you don't have the water supply that you had before. Obviously, we have to do a redrill of that well, a deepening of the well, whatever. It takes some time to do that, to get the permits to do it, and obviously perform the work. In the meantime, you still need water. So, that tank is there to provide temporary supply of water while the permanent fix, a deepening of your well or a new well is being corrected. So that's what that temporary water supply system is. And obviously, if, it's proven that we've impacted a residential water supply in quantity, lowering the water table because of the pumping.
Who's going to weigh the criteria as to whether the proof is substantial or not?
We do initially, and I believe we have a strong track record in responding to well complaints in this area. And obviously, DEPs look over our shoulders, and we consult with them, and the residents have the option to go to DEP and get their own assessment as well.
Proceeding my first question, why should I accept deterioration in the arsenic level in my water? I'm suggesting significant decreased clarity, just because it happens to fulfill the standards of whatever agency it is, whatever authority sets the standard?
So I think what you're saying is, why should you accept your arsenic levels increasing as a-
It's the quality of water.
As a result of a quarry?
Right.
So we provided information in the most recent submission. There's been a lot of discussion about this topic in the past at this, at these meetings. We provided, and we had our hydrogeologists prepare a formal response to that. We do not believe there's a correlation between rise of arsenic levels in groundwater and quarry operations. Now, we provided that information and explanations. We've tied it to reports that support that by USGS. I'll let Val Britton, who's here, who's our groundwater modeler and hydrogeologist, elaborate on his letter. I think it's appropriate, because he prepared it, and discuss that.
Thanks, Scott. I've come to three of these meetings in the hopes of answering that question, and sat for most of those meetings, thank you for asking that question. Again, I'm Val Britton, I'm a licensed-
Can I ask you to speak up on the sort of-
Can you stand up?
Could you put the mic down near him, please?
I'm a licensed geologist in Pennsylvania. I've spent a good portion of my career studying groundwater in southeastern Pennsylvania, which includes this area. Very familiar with the Naceville Quarry. As Scott said, I've been involved with the groundwater modeling and groundwater movement, and the impacts withdrawing groundwater has on the surrounding area. And I'm certainly aware that there's concern that, or belief that the quarry is causing these increased arsenic levels in the area. With that said, I want to give you a little background on your geology in this area. The rock that you're sitting on is what's known as the Brunswick Formation. It's a Triassic Age rock. It was deposited about the time of the dinosaurs. And it's a sedimentary rock. It's a rock that's made up of a bunch of little particles of rock that have eroded down from old mountains. These ancient mountains had various minerals in them. Of those minerals, arsenic minerals were one of them. So as these mountains eroded down and deposited these sedimentary rocks, the Brunswick Formation, which exists here, it's about 9,000 feet deep, the minerals that were associated with the mountain range that eroded are now sitting in these sediments where you live. When you drill a well, you go down through these rocks, and the groundwater dissolves these arsenic minerals, so you end up getting arsenic concentrations dissolved arsenic in the groundwater. It's very common in this area. I've done a lot of work with water supplier wells in this area, public supply wells, they all have arsenic problems in the Brunswick Formation. The United States Geological Survey, the USGS, as Scott has indicated, has done studies in this area because of the arsenic levels, and they've determined that there are background levels of arsenic in this area, as high as 70 parts per billion, or 70 micrograms per liter in this area, occurring as natural background conditions from the natural rock that's here. And it's part of the mineralogy of the earth. It actually has eroded, and it was deposited here, and it's a natural background condition. Haynes and Kibblehouse has done their own study in the area of the quarry, 15 wells. And as you recall, the USGS found that the maximum concentration the USGS found was about 70 parts per billion. Haynes and Kibblehouse found one of the highest concentrations to be about 55 parts per billion. And I looked at the distribution of these levels across the 15 wells, and there's no, there's no pattern that would suggest that the quarry is increasing its arsenic. The highest level that was found was 55 parts per billion, which is below what the United States Geological Survey has found is one of the highest concentrations. So it's within the range of what would be considered background concentrations of arsenic, even though there are-
You can't deal with averages when you're talking with people's lives and their lifestyles and everything. You can't deal with averages. You've got to look at worst case.
Yeah, well, that's true. And I mean, this formation, and if you go to your local health departments, they'll tell you, now, these formations, they have arsenic in them. They can be anywhere-
They tend to be, they tend to be, stay in a locked mode unless the earth is disturbed by quarrying and such.
Not true. Not true.
I said they tend to stay.
No, they're constantly dissolving. There's arsenic concentrations that are found at elevated concentrations in areas where there's absolutely no quarry. It's a result of the dissolution or the dissolving of these minerals into the groundwater.
So we don't need quarries to come in and multiply the effects somehow?
They don't. You would have to look at the groundwater. Is there, does, is there a concentration of arsenic around the quarry? If there is, then yes. But that's not the case. The data doesn't suggest that there's any increased concentration near the quarry. It's evenly, it's randomly distributed, just like the USGS study. The study that Haynes and Kibblehouse has done also shows this random distribution. The highest USGS concentration was 70 parts per billion. The highest concentration Haynes and Kibblehouse found was 55 parts per billion. The ranges are all very similar. The distribution is random. There is nothing that would just show this plume of arsenic in the area of the quarry. If it did, then yes, the quarry would be associated with that, but there's nothing that suggests that. The data doesn't suggest that. What people typically do in the Brunswick, in my experience, 32 years working in this formation, in this groundwater zone, people put filters on their wells.
And then they have to be maintaining it.
Correct. Correct. You know, so the bottom-
Just they would have to maintain any other device that they have to mitigate after the fact the situation is really brought about by the quarry.
Yeah, if it was brought about by the quarry, but the data doesn't suggest that at all. The data suggests that it's, the arsenic levels aren't being caused by the quarry. They're natural background conditions as a result of the natural rock that's there.
Well, it's been suggested that the rise and fall of the water table due to the quarry releases arsenic somehow. Like the arsenic, after the water table drops, somehow the arsenic dries, and when the water table comes back up, then it dissolves again. Is there any truth, any credo that-
The water table, I mean, if you have a well, if you're in, if your arsenic is in the water table, it's going to dissolve into the water table. If that water table drops, the arsenic up in the rock that's not saturated with the aquifer isn't going to dissolve in, into the, yeah, if it comes back up, it has a potential to do that.
Right.
It does.
It does do that.
You blowing this bullshit up our ass. This is unbelievable.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah, it certainly does. But there's nothing that would suggest that the arsenic concentrations are going above what's background. I mean, the background concentrations are reasonable to what the USGS would consider a background concentration. There's arsenic minerals. There's 10 arsenic minerals that exist- There's arsenic minerals, there's, there's 10 arsenic minerals that exist in the Brunswick Formation.
But if that's left dormant, it'd be fine.
Not true.
And if it gets disturbed, then it doesn't?
The ar- no. The arsenic, if, if you go out where there's absolutely no disturbance and there's wells that have been sampled in areas that are completely undisturbed, they have high arsenic concentrations. This formation has high arsenic concentrations, and it's not, it's not the quarry causing it. You know, if, if the quarry, if all the wells around the quarry had higher concentrations, and showed higher concentrations than all the surrounding area, that would scientifically suggest that the quarry's causing a problem, but it doesn't. The concentrations are random, there's no pattern to it. I mean, you, you have to look at the scientific data, you have to. There's nothing that suggests to me, I mean, I'm, I'm a licensed professional, I've been studying the groundwater in this area for 32 years, there's nothing to me that I would, that would suggest to me that arsenic is elevated because of the quarry. There's nothing that I see that would suggest that.
Sue Furlong, West Rock Hill Township. If I understand what you're saying, I have a rock, and it's sediment, and part of that sediment was arsenic at some point, 70 million years ago, or whenever you're talking about. Now, if I take, if I take a whole bunch of little rocks and I put them in the bottom of my glass, and I let that water just sit, everything settles, and push comes to shove, I'm really thirsty and that's the only water, I can drink that and everything is down at the bottom. However, if something comes along and stirs up those rocks, and then I'm forced to drink it, that's not the same. Now, the amount of arsenic in that glass is the same, but the process changes my exposure to what is in that glass. What's in the glass stayed the same, but somebody came and they stirred it up, and then I got to drink it, so the process of stirring it up made my exposure greater.
Yeah, the, the pumping your well stirs that arsenic up 100 times more than a shock wave from the quarry would. Because there's, there's two kinds of arsenic in the groundwater. There's what's known as dissolved arsenic, and there's what's known as total arsenic, okay? Dissolved arsenic is what dissolves into the groundwater as a, as a solute, like salt dissolves into water, okay? Same thing happens with arsenic, chromium, all the heavy metals. Total arsenic is when you disturb it and you create suspended particles or, or silt in the, in the water. The quarry has a blast wave that goes through, it's, it, it could create some of that, that sediment, okay? But the, the amount that that's, that that's actually causing that formation to, you've got to realize, you, you're looking at solid rock here, okay? This is solid rock that your wells are screened in. All that soft stuff up at the top, the drillers case all that off with steel casing. They're down into solid rock, so the only thing that's providing water through these things are these fractures in the rock. There's a, a network of fractures that connect into your well that bring that water to your well, okay? As water comes in, it ultimately brings very fine particulates to get in your well. Your pump turns on, and it, the torque on your pump can stir all those sediments up in your well. This is why the health departments recommend that if you're, if you're living in, in areas that have potential contaminants, whether it's arsenic, or chromium, or trichloroethylene, or anything, put a filter on your well. Because that will keep those, those suspended, those total arsenic concentrations from, from getting into your drinking water.
All right, let's say my well has this solid rock that I just described, and the water's coming in through the fissures, as you just described. What if your operation over here is stirring up the water that then comes through those fissures?
Those fissures are incredibly small, the, the fractures in the rock down where your well's, once you get 100 feet below the ground surface, we're talking very-
It's already dissolved, you told me it dissolved.
Yes, it dissolved.
So, you know, I'm not expecting the little pebbles to come through there.
What's dissolved is naturally dissolved already.
Yeah, but it got stirred up over here.
But it's dissolved, it's already, it's already dissolved in the water. If, if I have a-
Yeah, but what you did over there.
Yeah, if I have a, the dissolved state in the water doesn't stir up, okay? The dissolved state doesn't stir up. If I have-
This is a different scenario. That was Plan A, this is Plan B, you're stirring it up over here, it's becoming dissolved in the water, the water then seeps through and comes into my well. How do I know that you're not doing something over here that is increasing the exposure of that water to contaminated rock, making it dissolve at a higher rate, and then flowing into my well?
Because then all the wells in that area where you're doing that disturbance should have higher arsenic concentrations.
And do they?
They do not.
If I take, okay, scenario three, I've got my little rock well. If I drill down, let's say I don't, I find a concentration of arsenic in my rock, in my well, and it's, you know, it's very, very, very low, but my water is hot. Are you testing the bedrock of the well to say, yes, there is a correlation between what is in this particular person's well in terms of the rock that is in there, or just?
They're testing the water that's in your well.
But you're not testing the rock? If I had a rock, if I had rock and there was no arsenic in it, but my water has arsenic, there's no correlation. If I had lots of arsenic in my rocks in my well, and lots of arsenic in my drinking water in my well, then I have a strong correlation. I'm saying, do you ever do a correlation to say-
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to, you would have to sample, I mean, you, say you have a 200-foot well, I mean, you'd have to sample the rock in your well every foot or so, because the, the way this, these sediments are deposited, they're deposited with streams, you know, 80 million years ago, these streams deposited all the sediment. So you might, you might have a, a slug of sediment that comes through that's laced with arsenic, that gets laid down at, you know, 100 feet below the ground surface now, was the surface 80 million years ago, and then cleaner sediment gets thrown down on top of that. So you might have a lens that's, that's two inches thick, that has a fracture running through it that's leading to your well. And, and to try to find that and, and, and identify that in the rock, I mean, the United States Geological Survey's done a study, it's almost an inch and a half thick, and they've actually taken rock samples, they've looked at the mineralogy, they've done all that with various rocks, and they determined that there's arsenic that exists in the Brunswick Formation, in the mineralogy. There's 10 minerals, arsenic minerals, that exist in the Brunswick Formation that cause the dissolved arsenic in the formation.
Okay, now, some, some arsenic and other metals and things can be absorbed by the body, and if I understand correctly, probably some cannot be. Do you know what kind of arsenic is here?
I'm not a toxicologist. I mean, when, when, when arsenic gets analyzed for, it's, it's analyzed as, as the atomic element of arsenic, okay? So it's looking at the atomic element of arsenic. So it's, it's present as, as arsenic and dissolved in the groundwater.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Val, while, while we have you, we've also heard complaints about odor in the water. Is there any explanation for that?
It smells like rotten egg.
Yeah, that's hydrogen sulfide. That's not anything to do with the quarry, that's, that's areas of, of the Brunswick Formation that, when it was deposited, there may have been some growth on it, like a, a, you know, whether it's grasses or whatever that may have grown on it, then got covered over and actually turned it into kind of a peat. And as a result, as that, as that rots away, you can get, you know, you can get hydrogen sulfide as part of a decaying process. And if your well happens to tap into that, or into a fracture that's tied into that, you can get some hydrogen sulfide in your well. Again, filters, hydrogen sulfide, put a filter on your well to take it out.
In your opinion, would quarrying have anything to do with that, or?
With hydrogen sulfide?
Yes.
No. Got nothing to do with hydrogen sulfide.
Of the wells that are monitored by Agent Kibb, so what, what 15?
That 15 was, was from data, the, the data for the 15 wells, it's actually a little bit more now, but in the last 18 months or so, that we've responded to, to well complaints and were able to get samples.
Of, of those, what percentage had higher concentrations of arsenic? Any, or 5%? 20%?
That was in our last submission, it was a-